All right. I apologize for keeping you all waiting. We usually start these at 4:30 and I didn't remember. We were starting early tonight, so let me turn it over to Dr. Jenkins.
Chairman, it is that time of year that we look at our charter applicants. This year, we only have one, and so, starting early is sort of unnecessary now, but usually, when we do the charter apps, we try to give ourselves as much time as possible. Let me hand it over to Associate Superintendent Dr. Bernier to get us started.
To get us started this evening, thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, School Board Members. Just briefly, I would like to take the opportunity to let you know that there's some people in the school choice office that do a ton of work. Some of them are represented here tonight, some of them aren't. But specifically with charters, we are in very, very capable hands with Dr. Scott. She's going to actually take you through the beginning part of this presentation. But I also wanted to recognize Gina Dole, our Senior Administrator, as well as Tabitha Woods-Jackson. Tabitha is new to our staff. At the pleasure of the Superintendent, we were lucky enough to gain an additional position as we deal with 21st century grants, startup grants for the charters, Title I IDEA funding, and all the federal requirements for that. There was a need for some assistance in helping making sure that we're monitoring that appropriately. I'd like to thank you and the Superintendent for that additional position and want to introduce that new staff member to you. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Scott, who will introduce the board.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? We are into our annual work session for our charter applicants, and I just wanted to give you some information, some background. We did receive four applications this year, three of them withdrew, so we are left with one, and that these are the people who are sitting here before you. I did want to give you an update on some statutory changes. As you know, in the past, August 1st has been the deadline to receive charter applications. Well, as of change in statute, the date has changed to February 1st. So this will be our last session around this time of the year for August 1st deadline. We will now proceed to move further into early spring for work sessions. We will have to have a session for the February 1 session coming up in 2018, so we will shift from August 1st to February 1 after this. Right? Sitting before you today are the Board Members for Championship Academy of Distinction at Orlando, and to my left, we have Regla Alvarez, Savitria Guthrie, Linda Collins, Gus Pratt, and Jennifer Corinio. Championship Academy of Distinction will be a K-8 school. If they are approved, they will open grades K to 3, which will mean they will end at grades K to 7 by the end of a five-year term. At that point, they will have roughly expecting 640 students. The mission statement for Championship Academy of Distinction is the mission of championship is to provide the students with a comprehensive education with a focus on character education facilitated by a high-quality staff promoting academic excellence, leadership skills, and college and career-ready skills. They have a presentation to show you, and then we will get started. Thank you.
So hopefully, you all have been told ahead of time that you have 15 minutes for the presentation. We try to hew to that pretty closely if we can, and then after that, the process will be various board members may have questions for you, and we usually go one by one down the line with the questions, and then there may be further discussion depending on the Board's will. Okay? Welcome. We're all yours.
We are happy to share with you or journey through the championship experience.
So the objective of this meeting and the session with us to you guys is that we are hoping by the end of this presentation, you'll be able to understand the mission of Championship Academy of Distinction at Orlando, understand our vision of the Championship Academy of Distinction at Orlando, examine the processes in place to promote high standards and expectations for student and teacher performance and achievement, and identify ongoing methods and best practices utilized at our current CAD schools that align with the anticipated needs of the proposed charter. Our mission with Ms. Scott stole from me. The mission of the Championship Academy of Distinction at Orlando is to provide students with a comprehensive education with a focus on character education facilitated by a high-quality staff promoting academic excellence, leadership skills, and college and career-ready skills. This mission is, our five pillars here through our research really hones in on our mission, and we see the need in them in order to instill a holistic approach to develop well-rounded people as well as providing an education above standards. The vision of Championship Academy of Distinction at Orlando is that each student will develop a strong set of values and leadership skills necessary to become successful, productive, and contributing members to society. Our mission and our vision really parallel each other in that we can give them an amazing education, but we really stand behind, you know, developing a person as well, because you can have an awesome education, but in order to use it in the real world, you have to be able to develop a person and grow these kids into people that society, you know, can work with and they can contribute to. We are the current founding board. We are an established governing board. I currently sit on the other five boards for CAD. Our job is to enforce and execute the charter through continuous improvement and systematic, systemic, and sustainable practices. Our mission and our vision really drive these practices, and we continuously are actively engaged with daily school operations and oversight. We currently have five schools, three of which are Title I. All of our schools are fully enrolled with waiting lists. Two of them are accredited. Like I said prior, we are an established governing body, and two of our campuses, at two of our campuses, our teachers actually were recipients of the Florida High Impact Award for their high student achievement, and we are currently a member of the Florida Consortium of Public Charter Schools.
So why Orange County? We are seeking to partner with Orange County Public Schools to increase the opportunity for school choice options for parents and students. The whole idea is to partner with Orange County to implement evidence-based practices in all realms of school operations to meet the needs of all students and make adjustments as needed. We also would like to execute our mission and vision with fidelity targeting the success and growth of all stakeholders. We, the demographics for the current school year at our Davie campus mirrors very closely to that of the proposed charter. We're going to go briefly through student achievement at all or existing championship schools. Currently, our elementary, middle, and high school that are housed at our Hollywood campus are C schools. The elementary and middle school were 4 percentage points away from being B schools, and as first year schools, last year, the middle and high school, we're very proud of the learning gains and the achievement we've noted as we've aggregated our data, considering that we only had less than 50 students in our high school. Our learning gains, for the most part, shows that at least 50% of our students in general and in the bottom quartile are making positive learning gains. Our Davie campus, which houses a K through 8 charter, showed made improvement from a C school to a B school this year.
So can I do this? Can we stop the clock, Mr. Palmer? Any one minute? And I'm going to take a little bit of privilege of the chair and board members, if you don't want to do this, but you're trying to make your 15 minutes. You really blew through those slides. I'd sort of like to see them. Can you back them up and let us just sort of look at them?
Sure, 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 sure.
Do you mind? I was trying to look at the numbers real quick.
I know that the packets that you guys have in your folders are a little small.
And then we'll start the clock again in a minute, because I know you, I don't want to impair your 15 minutes, but I'd like to sort of look at the numbers.
Well, and I don't understand the first slide when they were talking about their target demographics.
So go all the way back to that one.
Yeah.
Because we won't ding you on your time, because you're at today.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Cato. Do you want to ask Ms. Cato a last question?
I just, I don't think I've ever seen that we have a target population we're going after. Usually, it's whoever decides that they want to go to the school. So I'm a little perplexed that you think 63% will be black and 23% will be white and 33% will be Hispanic.
Well, let's do this, if you don't mind, because I want to let you get to your presentation. Maybe jot down that question, and when we get to questions in a moment, we'll have you start with answering that one. Is that okay with you, Ms. Cato? That way, we won't let them get back into the presentation.
Yeah, I've just never.
I just wanted to see the numbers.
I, well.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. It's a great question. Mrs. Gordon?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know you want to go back and look at the numbers. I do them with Ms. Cato. I do need them to come back and answer. When you are targeting that large percentage of African-Americans, where are you looking to target them from? And I would like to know who you've been speaking with within that region to see who is in agreement with it, because the majority of the African-American schools have been, every single one is brand-new. They have all been restructured and revamped. Were you aware of that? Yes. I didn't think you were aware of that. Every single one has been restructured, revamped, and pretty much reconstituted, okay, with different faculty members, and so I would like to know not just your demographics, but where have you been surveying and who have you been talking to within that large population? Because I haven't heard anyone really say anything to me, other than the existing charters that we already have in the large African-American population. So I'd like to know if they are going to be on your board, and if they are going to be on your board, who are they? And where are these 63% of African-Americans coming from?
So let's do this at this time. When you're done with your presentation, I'm just going to turn it over to you all to answer Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Cato's questions right off the bat, but if you could, just cycle through those slides again and give us about a minute each on each one, just so we can look at the numbers. And then we'll have you start your presentation again, then we'll have you lead off once you finish your presentation with answering those questions.
Okay.
It may be easier to see it up there, because you can't see the bottom things.
Thank you. That's a good point. It just went through so fast. I'm trying to digest the numbers.
The bright green is CAD, and the other green is Broward.
So that is comparative data from our Championship Academy School at Davie versus the performance of students in the operating county. Each section identifies the subject areas or content areas that were tested through a state assessment test, which for this reason is the FSA and the FCAT for science. So as we can see, Championship at Davie is positively trending and has outperformed the district in all the areas measured. Hence, we've improved from a letter grade of C to B to a B.
Okay. Just keep going on to the next slide.
All right. Here's the learning gains by grade level. Again, these are the learning gains per the subject areas that were assessed through the FSA. Each subcategory identifies the learning gains for math, English Language Arts, or bottom quartile data for math and English Language Arts per grade level. And this is a brief synopsis of the school grade calculation using all the areas that are used in the formula to calculate school grade. Here is the K through 5 elementary school at Hollywood. Again, it's comparing the district. I've given you a sample of each of the different ways we aggregated our data. So this one compares district, state, and school. In some areas, there are some, you know, areas where we performed lower, and we are cognizant of those areas and have already implemented strategies and different methods in our school to ensure we're addressing these areas. Any questions?
Let me just ask, I know you're giving us percentages, but what are the numbers to get you to the percentages?
It's using the student, the numbers.
No, the number of students. I saw you had 528 and 900 on a previous slide.
That's using the formula for calculating.
No, I don't want a formula in order to compare that you are outrating Broward. How many students in Broward did you look at to get the percentage, and how many students did you look at at CAD to get your percentage? Like, if you have 6, 5, I know you have grade levels, but how did you get, you got to have numbers of students in order to get your percentages. What number? I saw 528 and 900 on the bottom of a slide. Is that, was Broward 900 students?
That's correct, and the other.
And then, what was yours? Yours was what?
Oh, okay.
528?
528 is correct.
Okay, but then the grades don't, I'm having a problem matching them up, what the percentages of grades. See, giving me a percentage is one thing, but when you give me a percentage, you need to give me the numbers to go, what, how to get to the percentage. You had to get to the percentage by dividing something.
It's total student enrollment.
Right. So I needed to see that, and.
At the Davie campus, the total enrollment previous year, I believe, was around 620 students.
Yes.
But if you're going to compare Broward, so what did you do? You took a percentage of Broward students to get your scores?
No, Broward, it's over total enrollment. The line that you're looking at, which is 528 over 900, that's the calculation for possible points in order to get the school grade.
I understand that. Where did you get the Broward scores and number of students to compare to make your rating so high? You're saying you're outshining everybody except in science. You're outshining the district, which is the state, and you only fell in one area, and that was science. So I'm trying to figure out, where did you get your numbers and how many students were involved in the state and in the county so that your numbers could be so extremely high?
The reports that are published on the State of Florida website that gives the information per county and per school, that's where that information was drawn from.
But Broward is a large county, so I'm, I just need help. You just can't pick numbers out.
We didn't. The State of Florida provides all of the information per district.
Listen to me, good now. Listen to me. I know what they provide, and I'm trying to be gentle. I know what they provide. I'm trying to figure out how you came about your numbers comparing Broward. Just, just don't give me state right now. I'll get to that later. Just give me how you compared Broward being, you have 528 students. That's what you're telling us. How many students do you have in this percentage?
The total amount of students that were enrolled between grades 3 through 8.
That you use in this percentage that took the math and science and civic tests to get the percentage that you have. If you don't know, just say you don't know right now, or you'll get it back to us.
We would have to go onto the report published by the state.
I figured that. Okay. All right, because it's very important, the reason why I'm saying it, Broward is very large. How large is your population? I didn't catch it.
At the Davie campus for last year, it was about 620 students.
Okay. See, so Broward population is larger than Orange. You see what I'm saying? So to get such a high percentage and not put the numbers there, if you had pulled out a sample, that would be, if you were giving us a sample, it can be a little misleading there.
We didn't give us a.
No, because this is the formula from the Florida Department.
It's not a sample.
Ms. Cato?
Are the Davie and Hollywood campuses your Title I schools?
Oh.
You referred to three Title I schools.
Yes. So the Davie campus is fully Title I. The Hollywood campus houses three charters that are championship academies. One is a K through 5 charter, 6 through 8, and 9 through 11. The elementary and middle school, there are Title I's.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're putting all of your campuses together to get this total?
No.
So which campus are you giving us to give us this total?
We're looking at the data for the Davie campus right now.
And then you're comparing Broward County and the state, and the state?
That is correct.
Okay.
So let's do this. I threw you off your game. So let me go ahead and have you all pick up with your program. We'll start the clock again, and then we'll go on to the questions, and, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the slides with us.
So if you would like, after the presentation of my slides, I can pull the formula or the chart that replicates this here to show how we got these numbers here.
Well, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
For now, let's finish your presentation, and then we'll come back to that.
Thank you.
You're. Okay. Here is the performance of the elementary school that is housed at our Hollywood location. As I began to say, we are a C school. We were 4 percentage points away. You'll see how that grade was calculated. We were at a 50%, and we needed 54% to be a B school. Again, we're trending very positively, and we've addressed the areas and subject areas in which we need to improve upon and make adjustments accordingly. This is the same chart that shows the breakdown of the school grade as it relates to calculating the whole grade. It shows that 48% of our students are proficient in English Language Arts while 54% are proficient in math. This is a look at the championship that is housed at Hollywood, but the middle school section, grade 6 through 8. They are also a solid C school, and they were 4 percentage points away from a B. Here are the categories that we're measuring against the state and school as obtained from the Florida Department of Education. This is the chart for the middle school calculating that 50% and how we got rated to be a C school. 46% of our students are proficient in English Language Arts while 45% are proficient in math. I just want to own in on the learning gains that, you know, over 50% of our students are showing that they are learning, while 45% of the students in our bottom quartile, that's the lowest 25% type of students, are making positive gains in English Language Arts and Math. A look at the high school shows that we are also a C school. We've tested about 44 students, because we only opened up with 9th grade last school year, so the sample size was very small to begin with. Again, there are some areas in which we need to improve upon, but there are also areas that we did relatively well in. This is a comparison of the school to the state and district. With equaling a school grade of C equivalent to 41% as calculated by those areas above. All right. So we know that curriculum and instruction directly impact student performance, so as a school, we would love to opt into and if considered to be open and operated in this county, we look forward to use the K-12 reading plan as established by your Orange County Public Schools, to use any other required and recommended curricula options and progress monitor and program. Currently at our other schools, we use iReady for all students, tracking English Language Arts or reading and math. We also would love to opt into supplemental curriculum per the needs of our students. For example, at our existing schools, iReady carries a program that's called Florida Ready, and that's a supplemental curriculum we use for English Language Arts for all grade levels, and that is embedded into our reading block, which extends our reading block beyond the 90-minute requirement. Effective student placement and master scheduling, we know that is very effective, considering the population that we want to reach all students and teach them and ensure that they are learning. We know that the intensive requirement for reading is no longer required. However, in our current championship schools, we still offer intensive reading and math to all students. Our collaborative problem-solving team meetings occur across schools every month to track RTI response to intervention, ensuring that all students are tracked, whether they need remediation and/or enrichment. Or school-wide, we have a school-wide system for collecting data that matches with the RTI process and collaborative problem-solving team meetings. At our current schools, each school has a war room, tracking every student, showing graphical representation or visual representation of their performance in all subject areas. Our students are also accountable for their own learning as it relates to driving or mission and vision, so each student has their data binder that is student-centered, and they track their own goals and their own learning. Our leadership data chats are ongoing. Every month, we have those as a leadership team to look at the data and to make ongoing decisions for targeting student learning and teaching.
School-wide disciplinary policy is important to us. The school will adopt the Orange County Board's Student Code of Conduct. In parallel, we will also implement a multi-tier behavioral support system for the children, one of those being student-specific. In order to address behavior and discipline policy correctly, we feel that everyone should have a student-specific policy. Behavior plans will be applied to those children based on behaviors, and incentives will also be rewarded for them to more, to filter and attain the behavioral goal. In collaboration with our parents, teachers, staffs, and those involved in the plan of actions, we will assess, analyze, elaborate the behavior and how to attain a positive outcome. The school also adopt policies for, and disciplinary policies for ESC children. As an ESC parent myself, it's important that we address any IEPs and correct them with behavior based on their IEP needs. Community outreach and marketing. Reaching out to the community, our stakeholders, parents, teachers, and those involved is very important to us as well. Some of the ways that we'll be able to target this would be monthly parent academics, newsletters, communication outreaches, things like RenHAB, which allows teachers and parents to have a one-way communication. Parents will constantly be involved within their academics. Surveying, volunteer hours, things such as open houses, PTA meetings, and other things would be past programs, multiple languages allowing more diversity, and things like Events at Championship. Championship has a numerous amounts of events throughout the year, and although they're fun for children, it is also a good way to involve the community. Some of the events that we do hold throughout the year would be Grandparents' Day, Spirit Week, trunk-or-treat, Career Day, Field Day, so forth and so forth. It's a good way for the children in the community to build character traits, as was previously mentioned, and as well as having parents and students obtain volunteer hours and encourage them to come together. Recruitment for Championship Academy. CAD utilizes many different strategies to recruit. Some of them include things like developing and maintaining relationships with facilities such as preschools, BPKs, and daycares. It makes it also easy for transition for BPK and preschool students to transition into kindergarten, direct mailers targeting families in the neighborhoods, local campuses, hosting monthly open houses, allowing the community to come in, meet our parents, teachers, as well as hosting community events, free public events such as barbecues and fairs, maintaining social media, creative ads, targeting the families that live in the neighborhood around our campus, and of course, acquiring memberships with local community groups, you know, such as the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary. Attending other local events and promoting advertisement door-to-door, things like attending other local events and promoting advertisement door-to-door, things like that to promote and recruit. And at this time, I would like to conclude our presentation and thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Paul Marini. You look like you were about to punch your butt.
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Dr. Bernier, okay. Do you have anything to add before we go to questions?
No, sir.
From board members? All right. Mrs. Gordon, Ms. Cato, what's your pleasure? Do you want me to have them start with trying to address some of your earlier questions first?
The other board members may want to get in on something before their thoughts disappear. And that they can give them time to answer.
Okay, well, you know, it was a very good question, and Ms. Cato goes first anyway. So why don't we begin with asking you all to address a question about the targeted population that was raised, based on that slide, and sort of talk to us a little bit about that or however you'd like to answer that.
And probably in that, maybe if you're going to tell us where you think you're going to locate or where your target location is, that would help us understand these demographics you've come up with.
So in addressing this question, the application itself, the template that is posted by the Florida Department of Education had default section two for target population. So that is why we specified the percentage as it relates to the demographics that were projected. As for the demographics and the percentages at our Davie campus that were mentioned in the presentation, that came directly from our demographic data from TERMS, which is the district database that we use to track student enrollment and input their information from the registration forms and so forth. As it relates to Orlando, would you like?
In order to give you a little bit of further information as far as our intended area, which is where the application was driven towards that area and the building that we've tentatively obtained, it is located at 7501 West Colonial. So that gives an idea as to where the general, the general area would be located.
Unfortunately, the number doesn't mean a whole lot. Could you tell me a street that's near it? Do you happen to know? Is it near Good Homes Road or? Okay, thank you. In the Ocoee area? Okay. It looks like Dr. Bernier has an answer for us.
You've landed in the correct spot. If you would know, if this is the former Target Building at the corner, basically at the corner of West Colonial and Hiawassee. If you get out to Clark and Good Homes, you've gone just a little bit too far.
Thank you. I don't know if there was a charter in there previously. That would be Dr. Bernier's question. Was that building used as a charter before or somebody had targeted it before?
It had been utilized as a charter school in the past, yes, ma'am. That was the one that closed, the Military Academy.
Site.
Site.
You know, I may have another question, but let's go ahead and let Ms. Covert go. We're going to go down the line. No, I let everybody else go and then.
Covert?
I had one question on the financing. So in reading through part of the application, there's a $250,000 line of credit from Charter School Management Solutions and that it's an affiliate of Championship Academy and that Cynthia Dotson serves as the president and owner. Are we getting a line of credit from the owner of Championship Academy or am I looking at this incorrectly?
Cindy Dotson is the owner of the management company. She runs more of the, can you hear me? Facilities and of things, while Mr. Pratt here is more operational. The $250,000 loan is a startup thing. It's a 10-year, 0% interest. Just to get us started off the road with furniture and everything else, we need to operate the school. With state funds paying it back, but anything that would be paid back, I guess anything that would initially be bought and paid back by state funds would then be property of Orange County.
And clarify Ms. Dotson's role with Championship Academy? So if the line of credit is from her through Charter School Management Solutions, what is her role at Championship?
They're actually unrelated. She's the owner of the management company and it's not related to the charter school itself.
Okay.
She's the management company that's been contracted. I'm the CEO that runs the management company. And part of what we offer a school is the availability of startup funds. But it's at 0% interest over a 10-year period. And the last two schools that they've opened have not opted into that option and have simply applied into the CSP grant, and they've been awarded that. However, during the application process, the board also sought out the information from the Charter School Support Unit, who specializes in making sure that the applications are compliant with the state. And they've asked that we do not calculate the CSP into the budget. So that's why we offer the $250,000 to complete the state statute requirement.
And my other question. In the application, it references an expectation of Orange County Public Schools providing a staffing specialist to serve ESC students? Can you talk to me a little bit more about that expectation?
So at the staff interview that we had, we realized that that would not be the responsibility of Orange County Public Schools and that would be the responsibility of the charter. And we understand that we will partner with Orange County Schools should we have any questions or any advice that we would deem necessary from them.
Okay, so more of a partnership role, but not an expectation for OCS to provide?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, chair.
Dr. Bernier, this may be for you or for Mr. Paul Marini, but typically when we get these applications, is it optional or are we, is there any requirement that we get lending terms, interest rates, terms of repayment, things of that nature? Because one thing that jumps out at me is that we don't have information. It doesn't appear on the line of credit and the repayment terms, et cetera. Is that something that they're required to give us or not necessarily? Yeah?
Can you hear me? Okay, good. They are required to detail in the application the sources of revenues and the expected expenditures. So they would have to indicate that. They do have, and I was just flipping through their application as we were sitting here, there is a letter in the application itself that details that it's a 10-year loan and that there's zero interest and zero line of credit. So they do actually have a document.
Okay.
If you look at tab Z behind there in your notebook, it's a letter from the Charter School Management Solutions. Because that's, as soon as that question popped up, I started looking for it and it is there.
Okay, well, I'm glad I asked.
And that's an advent of the new state application. The state application limits their ability to write in the narrative portion, and what it's effectively done is built large appendices.
Okay.
So there'll be a lot of movement back and forth between the narrative and the appendices.
I see it does say interest-free for 10 years. I didn't see that either, so thank you for that.
And then let me start with you all, and I'm not being disrespectful to you all, but sometimes I could get answers to simple questions from staff rather than convolute matters. Under, would the governing board of the school or the ESP on the equipment and the curriculum and the furniture and the assets of the property? Do we know that? Yeah, Kia?
That was one of the questions we posed during our staff interview because initially because of the relationship we had with the former school that closed and the developer, we did make it clear and had them to understand that what the expectation was. And therefore, they did explain that they would not be doing a quote-unquote "school in a box" where the developer would own everything. They did understand that anything purchased with federal funds or government funds, rather, would revert back to the school in the event that it did not remain open.
Okay, so we'll be protected in that regard either by law or by contract?
Yes.
I don't know how much time I have left. Let me just ask one last question real quick. I don't mean to push my luck, board members, but so I know that Ms. Jackson Guthrie is an educator, okay? Mr. Pratt, your background, I don't have your resume in here. I have that of Alvarez Guthrie &amp; Collins, but not yours or not Ms. Guthrie's.
Well, my background is also in education. This is not the usual educational management company that you see before you. A lot of them are not in education and seem to find charter schools as a way of making a profit. I myself joined Championship Academy as a teacher. I was a teacher for science and reading. I became a dean of students, a curriculum specialist, an assistant principal. I was the principal for four years and then was promoted to CEO of the management company.
Okay, so I'm glad I asked, Mr. Pratt. So you're a certified Florida teacher?
I am, and I currently hold my certificate.
And I wrote down Guthrie, but it's not Jennifer. What's your last name again? And I don't need a detail about it, just.
It's Coreno.
Okay, and what is your background?
I also hold a teaching certificate and I work for the management company. I am the director of compliance.
Okay, well, you're a certified licensed Florida teacher?
I am.
Okay, all right. Well, that's big to me. I don't know if it is to other board members, but it bothered me that of the three resumes I had, Sabitry was the only educator sitting up there. So now I know that's incorrect and the three of you are, so.
The goal is that our heart as a company, a management company and a board is the students. And we want to make sure that stays in contact.
Thank you. And forgive me, Jennifer, again. What was your last name?
It's, it's actually Corenio, but I just say Coreno.
Okay. Mrs. Gordon. Can you guys tackle the question Mrs. Gordon gave you previously? Do you want to take a shot at it?
Yes, I think I too may need some RTI on that question, so please bear with me, Ms. Gordon. So the question as it relates to calculating the school grade, the percentages are the percentages we got from the Florida Department of Education. So those percentages tell us the number of students that are proficient in the groups we presented. Then to get to the school grade calculation that you had a question about, uh-oh. We used the formula table. We just broke it down so we can professionally develop our teachers.
What your question is just the sheer number of students that tested within third grade reading Language Arts. So just, we'd have to pull the Florida report.
Okay.
How about you give a two-hour span?
We can do that.
Because you have, you have so many numbers and I need to know how you arrived at that and you have a wonderful chart.
Okay.
I need to know what numbers did you put in to get the percentage? You always have to have the numbers and you always have to show the percentage. You just can't select percentages up there. That's not the way you bring it in. Can you answer the other questions that I gave you? It appears that you will be coming in the territory that puts on his eyes. And I just shared with you that we are rebuilding that to the taxpayers, but you were not aware of that. So I wanted to know what parents you spoke with in that area. Because I never had any notice about them from the schools, even when the other school, the military school, was there. This board received quite a few notices about the millions that they were having. But I'd like to know, you had a high percentage and they were African-Americans. And I wanted to know, when did you, how did you get to that?
The percentages basically represent the community where that building was located. And we went, we've been to that site several times.
You need to show that to me. That is not a high percentage of African-Americans.
Can you fill up a cleaner's?
I have to beg to differ with you because that's not my highest percentage of African-Americans. I don't have that high of numbers coming. I need to know where you got your numbers. Your numbers confuse me right now. I know where my schools are in that district and every single one of them are brand-new, every single one. The one behind where you're going to be, do you know the name of that school right there?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay. That's a brand-new school to me.
To address the question, I'm sorry. To address the questions that you had as far as getting on the governing board, getting parents involved, two, do you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. To address the question that you had in parallel to that one with regards to the governing board and getting parents involved, we do have two seats open. One would be a parent and one would. Is it on? Okay. Can you hear better?
Yes.
Okay, to address the question that you had in parallel to the location and things like that, one of the.
The makeup of your governing board?
Yeah, the makeup of the governing board. Two seats would be for a parent. We would like to have a parent and then someone from the community to be involved.
What minorities do you have on your boards that you have a high percentage of minorities that you're targeting?
We plan on looking over resumes and sending out.
So you haven't selected, I heard, planned?
Planning.
You haven't selected anybody?
No, ma'am, not at the moment.
So you all ran out just aside? You're going to do this, check with anybody in the community?
Well, when we do go to the building and we go to the site, we find, in our experience in other counties, that it would be disrespectful on our behalf to come in and advertise to parents a school that has not been approved by the board. So we do seek.
How did you get to 60, how did you get?
We're looking up the information to provide where we got the demographics for that area. We're actively looking for that right now to provide to you where we got that from. But as far as publishing or holding meetings, no, we have not done so because, as I said, we find it to be disrespectful to advertise a school that has not yet been approved by the board.
Well, you can't advertise a school that hasn't been approved. We know that.
Right.
You have to have some kind of back force backing to say you need a school. Whereas I need to know your need. Where is, how did you get there for need? Just to say you're going to flop down in an area because it has space? Or, and you don't even know how many schools exist in that neighborhood?
I'm sorry.
I just want to know how you all came to want to do what you're doing.
Well, there must be a need. The idea behind the charter school is to offer the school of choice. There was, as you have stated, there was a previous charter school at that location with over 450 students enrolled.
And they failed?
They did, and we're not them.
But they made connections.
Through community.
And you don't find they failed and they didn't have to, but just management, they were very, very good. We were glad to have them. We welcomed that group. But because of management, that was one of their initiatives.
I would agree 100% with that, and that's why, because we're not the same management company and we're not, we don't resemble their initiatives or the way they did things because we've all seen the published news on the Acclaim Building. But they did a lot of things that were not accurate, but they didn't, the need was there because they had over 420 students enrolled. So the need is there. As a board, you approved a charter for that location, so the need obviously is there. Now, whether, the reasons that school failed, that's on them and that's not something that we should be held accountable to or for.
Okay, and I'm thrilled that I'm going to say, okay, I'm going to see.
Oh, Lord, I didn't even need the microphone. I am going to say this. You didn't, to me, you haven't done your homework. You didn't, to me, you haven't done your homework about the community, because all of the schools in that building, in that neighborhood, is being rebuilt or have already been rebuilt, faculty and staff members, and you didn't even know that. And that bothers me, because if you're going to be good neighbors, like all of the other charters want to be good neighbors, they have done some due diligence in looking at where they're going. And I'm a little skeptical now. I wasn't when I came in. I was gung ho, but now I'm really skeptical, because you're not familiar with where you're going. You're going in uncharted territories. You can't give me anything about the community. You don't know anybody in the community. You don't even know if it's a need. You're basing it on the failure of a school that was very good, but because of a few things that happened, they end up having to close their doors. But that school was needed, but you're not that kind of school, because it was a different type of school. It was military, yes, and that was kind of needed. You don't even, I'm a little scared now, because you really don't know where you're going. And you can't tell me. You got a good application, but until you could give me, I think Ms. Cato opened it up. I wasn't going to wake it up. I wasn't going to bother, but I think you should be able to say why you are targeting. You just can't come in a community because you have somebody that put up money. I don't even know that person is connected with the former school. I don't even know how you found out about the empty building. There are empty buildings all over Orlando in neighborhoods where they need, I have a lot of charter schools in my district, but there are so many other neighborhoods that could use you, but you just, I don't know if your person is connected with the former group that was there. And they called and say, "We have the building open." I'm not going to even put that question in towards you. But I see you with a good program, but I see you not knowing where you're going, and you're going in uncharted territory, and that begins to bother me. I, that's the only thing, but you could get the information to Dr. Bernier on my behalf, and if the other board members are interested, they need to look at the numbers, and they need to look at you're targeted and why you're targeting them, and why that community was selected. How are you planning to help those children and recruit them, and what kind of minorities are going to be on your board? One final question. Any of you planning on being paid? What role will you all be performing in an unpaid position?
We would be the governing board.
I'm sorry, I...
I'm sorry, we would be the acting governing board after transition.
So you all would be the governing board? Would there be room for, are you going to have room for others of you all are going to be the non-paid governing board?
We plan to expand to five members.
Okay.
Being carried in a community.
Well, you know, thank you so much. I'm not being tough, but are these questions not helpful to you all?
No. Criticism is always helpful.
Okay. You know, because we have to put children under your auspices. I am a teacher.
Oh, I hear you.
And if you're opening up a school, and you don't know your population, it kind of bothers me, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Ms. Gould?
So, Mr. Bernier, just to confirm that I know exactly where this is. This is the old Target where the military school was, right on Highway, on 50 across from Walmart, or Sam's Club-ish.
Okay. I'm going to say in general, yes, but when you get west of I-4, it's kind of the bad lines for me. But I pulled up the map.
What is wrong with you, then? You don't know what's going on in the west?
But I pulled up, but I pulled up the map. The school is on West Colonial Drive.
It's where the military school was.
And it's bordered by Dorchester.
Yes, okay, that's exactly where that is.
And Apocovine and Balboa on the north.
Great. So there's two things that have changed in the last couple of years since the other charter school was there, which was a kind of a cool, unique idea. One is, as Mrs. Gordon alluded to, there was, there is brand new schools and a re-energized school population in that area. And if you look at the school grades around that school, which would be your market competition in sense, I mean, even though we're a family, it's about choice, and it's about marketing and competition. You know, there are some, a couple of Cs on there, well on their way to Bs and As, and there's a couple that are now As and Bs that are up there. Secondly, that location scares me from a physical plant, and that was my concern about the last group that went in there, because it's crazy across from that Sam's and where that tropical, tropical, poyo, trop, thank you, yeah, that one, the chicken, the delicious chicken place with the plantains, thank you. You know, going in and out of there and student safety is, and especially fronting 50 is a concern. So while there, you know, as Mrs. Gordon said, there's a lot of different school choices in that whole corridor right there, and I appreciate, you know, the movement you're making. I'm wondering, as, and you don't have to answer this now, because I think you need to put some more thought into it, but why there? You know, because there is a lot of competition. We're strong and getting stronger from a, from a school perspective there. There's a lot of great programming there. It may be because the building is already equipped and been built out, but you need to go there during rush hour. And I mean, you know, student rush hour, because it is, it's kind of a scary place, just driving, you know, in and out of there. So my question to you is, had you looked at the surrounding, both charter and public schools in that area, and what made you think you could bring something a little different? The K-8 model is nice, but what else do you think you can bring that's a true differentiator to that population there?
Okay, just a couple of things to address, a couple of points. I think Ms. Gordon does have very good point as far as, you know, opening it up to, there's, she said something very nice, said you have a great application, you know, the area, you know, I would like you to be more familiar with. I think that's fantastic, because that's ultimately our step one to being a board or a company with a sponsor, which is Orange County. Right now, as far as the state requirements for the application, the state application does not require a site to be identified, which is the option that we went through, but being posed with the question today as far as what have you been looking for? That's why I said intent, that's one of the properties that we've, they've offered it, you know, as a property that is vacant. However, we have not signed any letter of intent, any sort of contract, lease, or anything of that nature. So it is a viable option, because the landlord has approached and said, "I have this building." However, it is not our only option. So we would be open to other areas that still meet the at need or at risk community that we're so effective with, and we've been effective in the past. So we are interested and open to other options as well. It's just state requirement as far as the application is concerned. We want to make sure that we satisfy the state requirement, which did not ask us to identify a site. At this point in today's interview, is there a couple of different landlords that have said, "Hey, I have this building," or "Hey, I have that building"? Absolutely. And that's kind of why that address was brought up in particular.
Yes, and, you know, to address why that area, because there are some challenges. In all honesty, as a leader of, you know, one of our existing schools, and as a founding board, and as being mentored by Mr. Pratt a few years ago, these challenges are, I feel, the foundation of our practices as a school, because we want to provide school choice for any child despite what their deficiencies may be. So that's why in our school, we have so many best practices and so many practices that are monitored and evaluated to tackle these challenges. So a report card is not necessarily the only way that we identify with our students, but it's how are we going to turn that report card to make that student productive, to set reasonable goals and expectation for that student to attain, to show us that they are learning. So, yes, while the population may be tough, we welcome that, because we want to bring that option to all students that despite what their weaknesses may be, we want to capitalize on their strengths and make them well-rounded, productive human beings.
Thank you for presenting today. I had a couple of questions and then a comment at the end. And so I had a question on page 99 of your application, and you stated that parents would sign a parent contract requiring 20 volunteer hours. I was just curious what remedies you use if the parents are not able to complete those hours.
So volunteer hours is a way for us to partner with the parents, invite them into our school, the parents and the community to work with us. Oftentimes, these parents are so far and not knowing what the expectations of, you know, are off for their child or children, and we want to bring them in and showcase what we're expecting from them or how they can partner with us as a school. So those volunteer hours are recommended or encouraged, but they're not required. So at the end of the day, there is no stipulations if they're not completed.
Okay, and then a follow-up. I was curious what model or how you have been following Florida statute and evaluating your teachers.
We use the Florida Consortium of Public Charter Schools model to do that.
Use their model. And then just to follow where Mrs. Gould was, we sat here and pulled up some of the school grades, our grades in that area, and it's pretty strong. I mean, there's an A and B. You're sort of on the, near Mrs. Gordon's area, my area, and Mrs. Gould's area, and so we're really pretty familiar with what has been trending in that area. And so it's predominantly Bs, there's only one C in that area. So you're in a, you know, in a very strong area for us as well, and the students have been doing exceptionally well. I mean, as board, we're very pleased with the superintendent and her staff's effort in that community. Also, and there's a lot of needs, and I was curious what you do as a board trying to work with wraparound services and if you've had any experience in developing any other partnership to meet those extra needs that children have, particularly those coming from poverty.
So we partner with Broward County to provide entities or organizations for, or homeless childrens and children, and referrals for children who may need that service. So we're actively engaged in the community with community business partners, as well as our operating district, to ensure that if we as a school cannot satisfy what that need may be, which oftentimes we are, we can outsource and find them the right services that they may need. I'm not sure if I addressed that question. Would you repeat it once more, please?
Well, you are, but let me just follow up. So do you offer any kind of a food or a clothing pantry at your other schools in Broward County?
Yes.
You do? And what about additional psychological services? Because I sit on the county's Child Abuse Council, and if you're going that direction, that is a very serious need.
Well, at our other schools, that's one of the things that drives our, as a management company, that's one of the things that we want to hold true. We do have a pantry that we open up, however, we do not open it up during school hours. It's done outside of school hours, and it's done in a more anonymous format for parents to come in, so they're not identified as needy or needing things that other kids don't need. So we do that. We do have a clothing program. We do have a way of them getting free uniforms as well. We do, as far as the wraparound services, we have even provided SLP, speech-language therapy, outside of the school in a home setting for them as well, as well as occupational or physical therapy beyond sometimes what their IEP may indicate through agencies that we've partnered up with as well. So we try to get them anything from shelter to food to clothing, the basic needs, and any additional needs they may need to be successful in the academic arena as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my last question.
Thank you.
Ms. Cato?
I want to go back to the volunteer, the parent volunteer. The child you describe sometimes is a child whose parent might be working a couple of jobs to make ends meet. Does, putting that 20-hour requirement or suggestion, does that chase away some of the parents? Because they may not have the 20 hours. It sounds like you're saying, "We're not going to enforce it if the parents don't meet it," but it sounds like in your recruitment, part of what makes you different and special is you're expecting these parents to give you 20 hours of volunteer service. It just kind of, it sounds counterintuitive if who you're going after, what you're describing is the economically disadvantaged. And, I mean, every one of us here knows that it's important to have parents involved, but what does that involvement look like? And I just fear that you're going to chase away some parents who might be great parents for you, but they don't have 20 hours in just trying to keep their family going.
And that's something that we've faced in the past, with parents coming to us saying that this, it would create a hardship or whatnot. Now, this actually has provided something that we love and adore, and we actually have received awards for it, which is our highest, within our PTA, one of the highest member groups is our grandparents, which are a phenomenal group to involve within your child education. And it's, we open, these 20 hours are not just parents, but it's anyone from your family. So when we have an event like trunk or treat, and we do things at flexible hours to make sure that we accommodate for parents who work double shifts or seven days a week or whatnot.
So you have them at midnight or 11 o'clock?
Well, no, but we have them as, like trunk or treat, that starts at 6:00 PM, goes all the way to 10:00 PM. And if they bring, you know, mom, dad, grandparent, each one of them gets hours for attendance as well.
Well, part of the problem here is we have so many people who work in the service industry that some of our parents aren't getting home until 8 o'clock at night, because transportation, the fact they have to ride buses, you know, we are, we are a very different community than Hollywood or Davie, and kind of where you're locating, you know, where you say you're locating, that's just, that's a concern of mine. The other thing that's a big concern of mine, it's great that you're all board members, but how often are you going to meet here in Orlando? Is the board, is the board going to be doing everything out of Davie or out of Hollywood? And how are you going to make those board members that you're recruiting here to be involved in it, how are you going to make them really involved in it if you're not having the board meetings here where their children are going to school?
I think that we would hold the board meetings here. We would hold it at the location, whether it be the tentative one that we have picked out now, or whether it be somewhere else. I think that's key, especially since as board members, you know, we want to be there, and we want to be seen, and we want to be able to see our school outside of, you know, pictures in Facebook or what have you. Currently, we meet a little over quarterly. It just so happens that with, you know, I don't know, today's technology and stuff, while business is held at meetings, you know, you have your emails and your phone calls and, you know, we all, I stay more interactive than I do remember know when she cuts her hair with some of the, you know, issue, or some of the board members and stuff like that, but I think it would still stay the same for the new school in that we would meet here or meet on-site with the other board members, just the same amount to instill and continue, you know, our success.
Well, that's refreshing, because most management companies who come here to talk to us, they're staying wherever their home is, and maybe they'll come through once a year, and what happens is, when the parents get angry because you've done something, they're going to call us. they're going to call us. And we're like, hey, we're not in charge of them. And we have to tell the parents, I'm sorry, you're going to have to figure out how you find one of them because if we approve you, we're done. So I just think it's crucial, if you want to be in Orange County, then you need to spend some time here. And one final thing, and I've looked at the application, and on page 106, you talk about the line of credit for $500,000 and that it's coming from ESJ Solutions. And it sounds like it's kind of going to be a bridge loan or something until you get some funding. But we've had to, we've had to close charters, deny charters because one of them, you know, they wanted a second charter, but the board was loaning money to them, and it was not real, real clear. And so on the, because looking at this, we're talking about 500 and 250,000. That's $750,000 that you could be out as the managing board. And we've had situations before where somebody has called the line of credit due, and it couldn't be paid. So kind of explain this half a million dollars.
That's a great question. But the $500,000, it's not, it's not referenced in the budget for two reasons. First, the charter school support unit, in order to make the budget compliant, says that we should not include that because that's not funds that would be used for the operations or day-to-day of the school. ESJ is the current landlord of multiple buildings in Orange County, and they've offered that as a stipulated amount for marketing. If we needed to use that for marketing purposes, they would offer that to us to kind of start recruitment or whatnot. But we have not taken that into account when it comes to budgetary constraints of the school because it's not something that should be allowed.
That's even scarier. I mean, that's like really scary because they have no buy-in other than they're trying to rent a building?
Which is why we have never taken that option on any of our schools. They offer it on all of, they've offered it on all of our schools that we've engaged them with, and we have never, ever taken that option. But we must disclose that they do offer that to us, but we've never taken that option.
Okay, because that's, that's like...
And we have no intention to.
You know, if something goes south on one of their other properties, they're going to come to you and say, I need some help. So that, that's real scary.
We just try to be as transparent as possible. So if someone has brought something to us, we let you know this is what's been brought, but we're not exercising the option.
I, for one, appreciate it. This is probably the 15th time I've done charters. And one time, I swear to you, I think the person who was presenting to us had bubblegum in his mouth. He was sitting in a map and went, oh, I think we'll come to Orlando. He was from Chicago. And it was like he couldn't answer any questions about central Florida. And so I do appreciate the diligence that you've had, the transparency that you have. It's obvious that you have a program that's working. My other favorite comment that we get is that the South Florida model doesn't work in Orlando. Well, I'm sorry, we're in Orlando, we're in Orange County, and our children might be a little different than the South Florida model. And you have to be flexible enough to take care of our children who are different. So, thank you.
Just to briefly tack on, just briefly, we do operate all of our charters under the Sunshine Law. So they meet in public with advertised notice. So we must hold our meetings here in order to have our parents have the opportunity to attend. So we do that as a company. So there is no, we'll hold it in Broward because it wouldn't be fair to the parents who would like to be present during the meeting for open comments. So we do operate accordingly to all the Florida Sunshine Laws.
I appreciate that because there have been more than one board that's come in front of us and said, no.
We know them too, and unfortunately, it's created a bad name for charter schools. So it makes our job a lot more difficult. We're actually coming to the table with good intentions and heart in the right place, and it makes our job also that much more difficult as it does yours. And as far as making sure that we accommodate all of our students, Regla identified herself as an ESE parent, and, just close the...
Go ahead.
And her child is actually on the autistic autism spectrum. So she's very, very diligent about making sure that our ESE population on both sides of the spectrum, the lower performing and the high performing with the gifted students, are addressed. And I myself have raised a child as if it were my own. And he has ADHD, which seems like multiple, most of the population does nowadays, but he also has been identified with oppositional defiance disorder, which means you tell him to go left and he'll go right. And so going through those teenage years, I think has prepared me for any population. So we're more than welcoming and understanding of those behaviors and make sure we pattern or make our policies adapt to a student base as opposed to a uniform that should fit everyone.
Well, and I think you can tell from the comments on this board, we take each one of our children very, very seriously. We want to make sure if we open a charter school, that if for some reason that parent wants to come back to Orange County Public Schools, we want them to be where they need to be. So, you know, we, we don't, we don't take this lightly. And sometimes the charter operators are not real happy with us. But at the end of the day, each and one of, each and every one of those children is a resident in Orange County, and we have a responsibility to take care of them.
Absolutely.
And in addressing volunteer hours, I'm just really excited to share this. In the beginning of the year, we give our parents a survey. And one of the questions is, tell us how you can volunteer for us and at what times? And we literally go through all the surveys to make sure that, we look at the times and the days they're available. So our events are set around those times and dates. And in our weekly newsletter to our parents, because we're making that school-to-home connection, this last one had 10,000 ways they could volunteer. So it's multiple options, flexible time, flexible setting, and it's throughout the year.
My concern is that parents will not even consider your charter school because of the 20 hours. That is, you know, is, is that a way to kind of pull off some of the children who could benefit from you? So it's not so much when you get them there, but when you're recruiting, is that a barrier for some of the parents to even consider what their, what your program could offer their child?
And if that may be, we would be able to reconsidering the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coburn. Board members, just remember, I'm just sort of going down the line and like in a circle like we usually do during charter meetings.
Okay, so you see, we scrutinize you very, very carefully because we care a great deal about our children, as I can see that you do as well. And you are in a county unlike many other counties. It's very friendly to charters. And we do welcome those charters that are good partners and complements to what we offer. So one of the reasons we ask about site selection is because it really does not help anyone to duplicate what we are already offering. So I would like, I've read through your educational program design, your curriculum and instruction design. And in reading through your mission statement, your mission and goals really are very close to ours. So I'd like you to talk about what kind of innovation you offer. When, when you were asked, why come here? You said to offer choice. We already offer choice within OCPS, and we have many other choice options in the area that, that you're targeting. So talk to me a little bit about how your program is different and what that would offer that's not already being offered in that area.
Well, I think through, can I go first? So I think our main target and then part of our mission is the character education.
Y'all could grab the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't say any bad words. Okay, I apologize. So, I lost my train of thought. Oh, the character education and creating a rounded person as well as providing, you know, a top-notch education. We have a character education director. We hold, you know, monthly assemblies where we have a different character trait every month that these students are then encouraged to, to show and proclaim to their other students in order to win prizes and medals and all that kind of stuff. Like one month it'll be, I am knowledgeable, or I am a leader, or I am loyal, or I am polite. We have whole assemblies directed towards them. We have geared in their classrooms where they get part of that also incorporated into their, you know, daily timeline education. And then we have, like I said, you know, awards and stuff that go out to those students that excel in that, and they're pictured in the hallways. And, you know, they're commended for having these character traits and for being, you know, good people, for lack of a better word.
And just to add to that, I'd love if you guys could visit our school just to see what we do because I don't have enough words to describe how we conduct our collaborative problem-solving monthly team meetings. So I feel and/or we feel that that is a very important component to our practices in our school to track academic and behavioral concerns or just in general for the students. So we meet on a monthly basis as a team with the teachers, meeting for each, having a meeting for each child. So they, we start the meeting, they present each child, how the child is progressing or not progressing, using a graph. The graph tracks the student as well as the peers in that class and then generates what's called a trend line. So we look at those graphs for each child, and we make prescriptive decisions for that child, whether that child is struggling or not. In one of our most, most recent evaluations by Broward County, that was one of the things they highlighted and applauded us as a school for doing. And, you know, they even commented that that's really a great practice of ours. So it's just analyzing each student and making students specific targeted goals and reasonable goals, looking at the data and the evidence that we're collecting on these students and moving forward to make ongoing decisions. I think our mission is also very well-rounded in addressing all the stakeholder groups that are involved in student achievement because it talks about highly qualified staff. We do need, you know, teachers and staff that are competent in order to enrich or increase our student achievement. We do need to embed in our students good character and quality because if they understand what it means to be responsible, then they're going to take responsibility in doing their work and doing so with pride. So then it makes that well-rounded child not only focused on student achievement, but the whole child in general.
I love that. That sounds great.
Thank you.
My daughter is in an Orange County elementary school. They do all the character education that you're talking about. I love focusing on the individual, individualized plan for each student, but I have some of my schools that do exactly that as well. So is there anything else that you can talk about that's really innovative and that, that's not going on already in the surrounding charters or Orange County schools in the area that you're targeting?
Well, as far as the, the mission and the vision of the school, I think they've explained it rather well as far as the character ed is concerned. I do think that the school takes character ed further than the other schools that we have visited or we have been familiar with. Because we have also gone to some of the schools as potentially interested parents just to see what that looks like. And basically, our character ed program is not just a character trait a month and that's it. You know, sometimes we see them in the hallways as we walk through some schools. And we take it further. We have full award ceremonies equal to the honor roll, which if we award trophies and awards for math, reading, language arts, science, and social studies, but a child is just struggling and missed that honor roll A or B because they got one C, but they are amazing at leadership or perseverance or being determined, they should also get rewarded. So we have equal importance as far as assemblies is concerned and awards for the character ed. So we do take it one step further. Also, we send home more parent reports in order to involve parents than I've seen any other school do. Our iReady program, which we've spoken about, which is one of the state of Florida approved programs for progress monitoring. Perfect. Most of the schools that we've visited do not give parents the two-year analysis report, which can trend a child back two years or forward two years. And it also actually creates PDF models for wherever that child is deficient within that lesson. The parent portal is not something that, at least Broward County, have, they've never purchased a parent portal as an option for parents. I'm not particularly sure if Orange County, I don't believe so when we looked. We know you offered it as a PMP, as a progress monitoring tool, but the actual parent portal itself is something that's also innovative and different. We use also something called Class Dojo, which, perfect. So see, we're on the same line or not. So we offer parents the ability to message the teacher back and forth, for those of you who don't know what that may be as far as behavior is concerned. We use Renweb where they can check their academics on a day-to-day basis. If a child is ever absent, all of their work is provided to them online. And any reports where the child is trending, like we discussed, we're saying positively or negatively, the parent can also see that on a weekly basis. So it's not just being able to see what my child scored this week on a spelling test. It's where are they going? How is this moving? And it, all of our reports trend the child two years down if need be or two years up. If your child comes to us in an advanced pattern, we want to make sure we keep that growth going as well. So the fact that we provide parents with so many reports and so much ability to get information from the school, triggered with the character ed and the extent that we do go with the character ed, also with the CPST meetings where we have those collaborative teams, which each individual child has those plans. And lastly, the fact that each student, whether they're a kindergartner or an eighth grader at our, at our schools, have their own data binders. This is something that we haven't seen at other schools. I'm waiting for you to tell me you guys have it here. But we have each child, including kindergartners, have their own data, data charts and data books, data binders, and they track their data. So they set a goal, they, you know, they shade in the bar graph. If they met that goal, what did they do to help them meet that? If they didn't, what should they do next time? And they take, they develop accountability for their own individual scores and their own education, which we try to instill very, very young. So that's also something else. So that compiled makes up how we're a little bit different.
And while we're tracking students, we're also tracking our teachers. So we own in on a lot of accountability on teacher performance through our PLCs. That's one aspect. So I talked earlier about the war room. In that room, we're not only looking at student data, and, you know, it's very color-coded, and you can walk in and you can evaluate, you know, based on the number of greens I've seen. This week, we're tracking students analyzing cause and effect relationships. I can tell that in championship elementary, 80%, about 80% of the students are grasping this skill or concept. We do that for teachers too. So we have a common monthly assessment, and we de-identify the students, but we print those graphs that replicates the ones of the students per teacher, per subject area. So when those teachers come in for CPST meeting and/or PLCs, they're looking and they're making, we're having accountable conversations. So we're saying, Ms. Regla's class seemed to have excelled in this particular benchmark, but my class is struggling, and here comes the best practices. So that's also another innovation of ours that while we're training these teachers and investing in their professional development, they're readily seeing what's happening and, you know, how we can fulfill what our needs are.
So Dr. Bernier may have given you a heads up or Ms. Scott Sweeney that I asked this question of all our charter applicants. And Mr. Palmer, we need to chime in if I can anymore. I think I still can for now at least, which is, would you agree to insert a clause in your contract that your contract would be subject to revocation if you did not achieve at least one C grade in any three-year period?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the second one is, would you agree to insert a clause in your contract that your contract would be subject to revocation if you did not test enough students to receive a letter grade from the state of Florida?
Yes.
Okay. We've had problems with that in the past. We don't always have the best track record with our charters. So, you know, one question and then one comment. Question is, technology plan for your students, do you have a ratio of devices to students of any type? Or do you, do you have devices that you issue to your students? Hardware devices, whether tablets, laptops?
We do. We have both. We have laptop carts that the kids charge their laptops overnight. They come in, they do have access to their, to their laptops. And we have full-blown labs as well that we've established for them for testing purposes or to go through there with their electives as well. But their individual components are laptops at our current campuses.
Okay. So, you know, it's interesting. I haven't gotten in this direction in previous charter application work sessions, but I'm going to start because we're, thanks to the larger generosity of our taxpayers, we are well on the way to transitioning to one-to-one electronic devices for every one of our students issued by Orange County Public Schools. I think we're up to a hundred thousand devices today, uh, for our 209,000 students and I think we'll be at one-to-one within three or four years. So I, I will share this with you. It's becoming more for me at least, as long as I'm on this board, more of an expectation for our charters as well because I think we want our children to be digital natives and be comfortable with digital technology, especially since we have so many of our charters that are, uh, um, disproportionately targeted towards higher poverty populations. And, and frankly, you know, the, the biggest thing I believe in the digital initiative that we have as a school district is that we provide digital technology for students that oftentimes would not have access to those resources and I think that's a great leveling ground. Um, so just be thinking about that. The other thing I would say, you know, and, and this, please understand, I, I do not mean to be rude at all by saying this, and I hope I'm not coming across as rude because what I'm about to say is sort of blunt, but it's been my experience that when we get South Florida charter operators up here, they have a lower level of expectation. And I don't know if that's an indictment of South Florida school systems or whatever, but we're very, very proud of our accomplishments as a school system. We think there's a reason that we have 209,000 students, we're the fourth-largest district in the state, but we only have about 33 charter schools in this county. And it's because, it's not a knock on charter schools, it's because so many of our schools are high-performing. We won the Broad Prize for Urban Education as a top urban district in the country. I don't believe one of our traditional schools, we have NEF schools this year at all among our 189 schools. We're, we're not a low performer. We're, we're not a high-density urban district that, that's a low performer. And where I'm going with this and the, and what may come across is, and, and it's not meant to disparage you all, it's going to come across that way. When I, when I look at your grades, I will tell you, when I have charter applicants come before me, um, even a lot of my board members don't know I do this, but I, I pull up the spreadsheet, um, the state spreadsheet of all the schools in the state, and I type in that charter operator and I look at their grades. And to be very honest with you, when I look at your grades, it's nothing that knocks my socks off. I mean, it's not to say that you won't get a charter from us, but, you know, I would prefer to see, as we do with some of our charter i-operators that come before us, who will also serve disadvantaged populations or higher poverty populations, more Bs and more As. And I'm looking at Championship Academy at Hollywood, uh, I'm looking at C, 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 five Cs, B, A, C, C. Uh, when I look at Championship Academy of Distinction at Davie, I'm looking at, it's a little bit better there, B, C, C, A, C, C. And, you know, a lot of board members up here will also do a deep dive on the data and I've looked at, you know, the, whether you're Title I schools and whether percentage of poverty that you have at those schools. So my point is, uh, if you get a charter, um, you know, I just, please, I hope you'll, I mean, I know you'll strive for this, but I'd like to see our charters, especially in the areas you're looking at targeting, be A, B schools. Because we have too many A, B, C schools, we, we don't have too many. We already have justifiably, schools that we're justifiably proud that are A, B school, C schools, that are traditional public schools, where we have one-to-one technology, those children have access to state-of-the-art resources. Um, we're in the midst of a, by the time it's all said and done, close to $5 billion construction program. We've renovated a hundred of our schools. Bottom line is our kids already go to school in state-of-the-art facilities with state-of-the-art technology. Don't expect you to beat the pants off our traditional schools, but I do expect you to at least equal the performance of our traditional public schools. And, and, you know, to be honest, the numbers of those other two schools that have multiple-level grades doesn't wow me, to, to be all that honest with you. So if you get a charter, good luck. More comment, you don't need to respond. I know you'll try, but take that to heart, please. Because I, I do think you all have passion for education and I look at that when, when we get applicants up here. We get a lot of people who just want to get into the business, as you can imagine. And I do think you're competent, for me at least. You know, I can sort of sense competence. I don't know what Mr. Dr. Bernier thinks, but you seem competent to me and Ms. Scott Sweeney or, or, you know, or Gina think, but you seem to have some competence in education. Um, but, you know, I hope you'll come in and perform at, at a high level. It's very, very important to us. Mrs. Gordon?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh, my concern is I'm not impressed with the Cs because, and the reason why, um, I, I've been in the district of where you're trying to work with underperforming economically disadvantaged students. And during the FCAT time, if you all were born and if you were around, we had eleven schools that received a letter grade of F. And you were involved in FCAT with, with a couple of those. And that's why I wasn't impressed with your lettering. Because I feel if you're a charter school, you have got to go above and beyond. You're mediocre. What, one A? I have underperforming schools that went from an F, eleven of them, in one year to an A. And then the superintendent appointed great leadership in those schools. It scares me about your leadership. I'm looking at your leadership and I'm looking at your organizational chart. That bothers me. Uh, because I don't see names of positions that should be in your organizational chart that's going to help you to make it in an underperforming economically disadvantaged student. Number one, I didn't see a dean. I didn't see a social worker. I didn't see an assistant principal. How are you going to run a school? And I did not see them budgeted. That disturbed me. Yes, you may have met the state guidelines, but did you meet the parent and the children's guideline? No. Be honest with yourself and your heart. You have not met the guidelines for the children. Because you're not even giving them anybody that can help them when they get in trouble. You did put in a counselor, I think in the second, uh, the, the second phase of the charter and then you threw in a, the governing board and all that in your, in your last year. That's not the way you work with underperforming economically disadvantaged, and that's probably why you had Cs. Charters are supposed to be As. You're supposed to show us what to do. We used to have a board member that would sit up there and say, "Oh, we need to copy the charter." I'm scared to death now to copy any charter. We have several in this district that's had a struggle to get where they are and one just pretty much stayed the course. But that bothers me. So I, I need to ask you, um, even looking at your budget, you stated that we have a hard time getting transportation for children, un, you know, under two mile in a dangerous area. And you offered the parent that. I don't know how you're going to do it budget-wise, based on what I saw in your budget. Then you offered parents up, up to four miles. Wow, that you would provide transportation for them. What have you received? What, what, refresh me again, you were, what were, what was the enrollment you were asking for? What was your enrollment that you were trying to build a school on?
Well, it's, it's, it's going to increment in phases.
I, I know. Just give me your first year, because I'm looking at the number of staff, then your second year and your, if you don't know, just say you don't know and you'll get it to me. Okay. Okay, let me move on. You could get, just, just put that down as some of the things you gotta get to, Dr. Bernier to get back to me, okay? And with, with the up to four miles, that, that bothers me because what if all of your kids needed a bus? And I think Pam Gould shared with you that they would. That, I know that area, that's totally my area. That's the heart. That, that, that's where I, I go all the way up to, to, um, what is it? Silver Star Road from there. We curve around, that's my voting precinct. You're right by my voting precinct in there. All those apartments are my voting precincts in there. So what I'm trying to say is, I, I don't know how you're going to do your budget to get the transportation. And I don't think you took a look at it. Writing it is one thing. And then the next thing, your contract did require that you, um, that the bus drivers meet the statutory requirement. I'm a little leery about that because how do you plan to get your bus drivers, take them from us? I'm just asking. If you're going to re, if you're going to transport all those kids and you will more than likely will have to transport them and you're willing to go out four miles, how many buses approximately you need just for the first phase? Then the second, and then the final? Then where are you going to get your drivers and who's going to train those drivers to make sure that they have the proper training? We have one of the best, the best transportation department. And a lot of times I find out that when they do have accidents, there are bus drivers that were, were chartered out or either, um, I, I think one hit me once at Freedom High. And that was funny because they were, they were chartered and they were bringing, um, one of the, you know, bringing the van to that particular school. And come to find it, it wasn't our bus driver. So if we have to do contracts with other companies, I, that, that's just a question. You can leave, get that answer to me. You don't have to answer tonight, okay? I'm concerned about that and it, and I didn't see it, um, how you plan to bus every child if you have to, because you don't want anybody walking around there in that area. You don't. So, um, that little part in addressing your budget. I, I am concerned about the, um, organizational chart for school governance and management and your staffing. There's no room for an assistant principal, but you wrote up a description for an assistant principal. So how could you write a description for an assistant principal? That needs to be corrected. On 166, um, there's, in 67, there's no mention, but on 176, you talk about an assistant principal and the role. So why would you leave out an assistant principal? I don't know how that person's going to run the school, just our positive pathway alone. We, we were begging Dr. Jenkins, they had deans. We said, "No, they need an assistant principal and a dean." Okay? And I did not see, how are you going to? Those kids that are underperforming are not going to be very nice. Did you know that? Today, we caught hell at our school. I'm not going to tell you no lie. And I'm in a behavior school and we normally have control, but those little babies, when they get ready to do what they want to do, there's nothing, you know, you just said, underperforming, economically disadvantaged, but behavioral, it comes with the territory. We can tell you, we just opened a new school where we had to pull kids out that never, they were underperforming everywhere they went. They were economically disadvantaged. They are also behavior kids. I see no mention. I see where you talked a little bit about ESE. So that, that's, that, that's a concern for me there. Another thing, and I, and I really want you to follow your heart. Like I said, it's a good application, but what good is the application if you don't have the carrots and the mechanics to get this thing done, even if you've done it before? And then the chairman did point out, it wasn't done at high performing. For whatever reason, you're in the same boat we are, based on what I saw. You go, you told me in this package, you're going to follow the Florida School Assessment and that's a dog. I get to give that and you don't know what's on it? And I hope you never look in it to help your kids, because we're not allowed to open those packages and look in it and teach it. So if you're not going and doing those standards and hitting those goals for those kids, I don't know how you plan to master it, because it's a tough thing from the FCAT. And then my final question is just explain to me how your curriculum, and I, I didn't see it in here, how your curriculum intend, that you intend to use? I don't, I don't know. I keep, what curriculum are you going to use to help obtain the year's worth of growth? You know, you, you should know, you're, you've been a teacher. You can't get a year's worth of growth in a year because the kids are not in school for a whole year. So to, so to put that in your plan, how, just tell me how you plan to accomplish it so I can go back and take some of your ideas. Because that's what we try to do with charters. We find out, like Ms. Coburn said, what you're doing that's innovative? Because if you're doing the same thing, then that's not innovative. And charters, according to the state, are supposed to be totally different, totally innovative. So if you could just tell me, since your primary focus is assisting students that are underperforming, economically disadvantaged, and you didn't mention behavior, but it comes with the territory. Please explain how the curriculum you intend to utilize will help obtain a year's worth of growth.
Okay, um, a couple of things to, to address that question. Number one, as far as what we do for, to recov, to recover some of the, um, low levels of reading or math that do enter our school, we do, as far as the state statute is concerned, for intensive reading is only offered, for example, in middle school. That's where the intensive reading programs have been for years. We try to do a pull-out model with an intensive reading or intensive math program throughout our elementary as well. Um, we also go beyond, and those students that are struggling readers, we offer them a phonics program because if you, as, like you said, you, you teach them reading at a reading level, they're, they're never going to catch it if they have phonics or decoding issues or phonemic awareness issues. So we trend all the way back to phonics and phonemic awareness at an elementary level just to make sure we recover those pieces and they're able to more quickly attain an at-level, um, reading score. We also have the interventionists that assist with reading and math as well. And I can't help but default back to the, the continuous, um, comment as far as the C grade is concerned. And I'd just like to briefly, um, explain that.
I'm sorry. If Mr. Sublet would want you to explain your Cs, that's fine, but I just need to know, I don't want you to get off track on it. I just need you to know, to explain how the curriculum you intend to utilize will help obtain a year's worth of growth. I want to keep you on task there because the time is well spent.
The programs that we use for our intensive program is insight and rewards.
And that's all you plan to use?
That is what we currently use, yes.
Okay. You haven't gotten very, I, I won't bring that up. Okay, I won't.
We would have to wait for the state adoption list to come out per year and see what you authorize for, um, low performing.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Um, so, um, Ms. Cato, Ms. Coburn, before I go to Ms. Gould for the final question, do you guys have anything to follow up with?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gordon, are you good?
I'm good.
All right, Ms. Gould, bring us in for landing.
Mrs. Gordon asked my two questions. One was about the, the, um, kind of innovation component and you asked part of that, and the other was about the safety. So I, I'm satisfied.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. With that, Dr. Bernier, are we good? Anything else? Ms. Scott Sweeney, anything else? Okay. All right. Uh, with that, um, Dr. Jenkins, good? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see you.
No. Bye.